We have respected Amir Saab to start the meeting with silent prayers. Please lead us inside. Salaam alaikum wr wb. We are really honoured to have respected Amir Saab Kababir Sharif Pote Saab and also respected Shukur Bhai with us. They are esteemed guests of our Jamaat. They have taken out the time from their busy schedule to be here with us in Zaklaha for all of you to be here. We will have this short session with them, Insha Allah, Talang Tilmaqri prayers. And I don't want to get in the middle of these beautiful guests that we have here and their guidance and stories to share with us. So with that brief introduction, I would like to ask Shukur Bhai to please tell us and share his story with us.
Assalamualaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuhu. Ya'hamba toh batahiya, aapko Qadhyaan se abidard karke Pakistan aaye the. Firi 19, bhai 1935 ke liye daaye se Qadhyaan hoga tab khudal. Toh phir dusri jange azim shuru ho gayi. Je jo bhai se sab formen, pati ho gaye chale gaye. Phir dusri jange azim jab khatam hui, 1923 me gareban. Toh phir a gaye bhai, dootin bhaiyon ke sajne ho gayi. Phir uske ek do saath ke baad Pakistan bana shuru ho gaya, Narav Aravane. Sabka ke, jo usse maan ke, toh phir hum di jaate the, unki badut ke le jaate the. Mughali jo school ki ground me, vo jaate the, phir vo aasta aasta, vo bhi le gaye, phir Qadhyaan bhi aasta aasta, khali bana shuru ho gaya. Khali toh shadi bhi Lahore chale gaye. Hum aafri ka afri me aaye. Yeh ne mujhe aap, kon saathin tak, teen din boogie house me aaye. Phir aapki ka afri, kuch milti ki gaadiya nahi thi, 20-25. Vo jagat ho, subah Qadhyaan se chale. Toh shampu Lahore pohnge. Do building me thi Jamaat ke paas, ek Gatan Baag aur ek Jodhaam building, Gatan Baag me di jaate the. Toh teen din hum mahar aaye. Phir uske baad, mere bhai se Subedar Abdul Raan, vo preyay bhi the, Miyani ke paas ek jagah hai Miyani, mahar par. Toh phir hum mahar chale gaye, phone bane, dukaane, mukaan par raad kar di mahar aaye. Toh phir mere bap, nee bhai, Dura Maan Deegi, vo koi taam se, so aadmi nahi the. Toh bane ka mahar chale jao, bharti ho jao, fawaz nahi. Toh main mahar gaya, koi dechey din nahi raha. Jo bhi mahar, us milti area me jaate the, bhi mujhe pasand nahi aaya vo fawaz ka. Sardhi hoti thi, ek nikkar ho gayi, kamiz. Bin yaad pehle bhi, guh guh toh vardish karate thi. Toh phir main wapas a gaya. Phir bade bhai the, jaapru, Dula Saab, Wankhoon par kaam karte the, Wankhoon par kaam karte the. Phir main paisa bad a gaya, dootin saath mujhe kaam seekha, seekha phir main se bole a gaya. Tabi, trepan ke, pizzada ke baat, tabi, tabi, pizzada, jo pehla marshala raha tha. Jana Rasm Khan Saab usse bataaye the, unhone, khabo paya tha. Phir main kafi 35 saath se bunde kaam kiya. Chota sa saath kaam baat shuru kiya tha, phir Allah taala, karte karte, vo sabse buri dukaan di thi. Toh uson ko bhi kaam seekha tha. 74 me phir jab, hum aapme, wajah musre, akhiyat karar diya, toh badi, toh dukaan, kafi news a rahe nahi the. Toh bachon ko lekar, phir main, rabbay a gaya. Toh phir dukaan bhi lu, ki gar, paisa chhuraaya tha. Chabi apne brochi ko de di, jeenka gar tha, him ko de dena. Toh phir uske baad, rabbay aaye, rabbay me bhi haalat aisa hi the, ek do mein, basin varabhi khadi hoti thi, sab khala. Toh main baad phir main se bole gaya, mere jo Leonard the, achhi, toh achhi the, phir un dukaan de di. Phir maine ka, rabbay shuru kar diya mahar par. Phir kuch, uske baad, vo, daffay aisa hi ban gi thi, ye tumne kalma, tuh rghaya, main tumne purani aaya, tuh rghai di. Phir mahar bhi dootin dafa jail diya. Budi pehni, aresunab, kafi Abdul ki, is par bhi, is mujhe shraabi thi mahar. Churaasiya, do saath, kaidh baam, shakat, 5000 rupees durmana. Toh phir vo, session me, diya, baam, unhone, reha, reha kar diya. Uske baad phir, jaise hi, acha si me, muqamal me, rabbay a gaya. Ya'ham dukaan kar di, him ko gayi kaam tha, ya'ham kaam khatam tha. Main ne, phir saath kitabo ka, bas aisa hi, din me aaya, kitab, me rok, maine kitabo ka, shuru kar diya. Vo itna kaam chala, aata, ke, usse, hoti matre. Sab Jamaat ki kitabe, jitne bhi daare the, sab, dusri kitabe bhi, bade bade, Shora Pakalab, Othakli ki, dusri, har dusri kitabe. Vo bas uski, jo, saare Pakistan me, maulvi khudaate the, khareel kar jaate the. Koi paisa telephone kar kar jaate the, unko pasan lag gaya. Main ka, pehle, bad, main mahar bhi diye the, main him ko parser kar deta tha. Toh phir mahar par ek maulvi tha, usne phir vo kadma kar diya, phir sovaan din chiniuji me rekar aaya. Phir vo, dek, do saath kadma chalta raasare, khadar, editor vahra, dusri, jise, aur kafi aadmi thi. Hum log chiniuji jate the, jamat hi le jaate thi, phir wapas aaya. Vo bhi dek, do saath ke baad, vo kadma bhi khatam ho gaya. Toh mera kaam, hor jyada kitabo ka pad gaya. Badi mood, ye, hor kitabe, har jagah bhi kitabi. Toh bas phir vo, maulvi ab jyada preeshaan hui. Toh phir, ab, pehle toh, ek CID ka, main vo ata hi, ye, CT ki niyaam, haqma, bana Pakistan di. Vo uski poli saai, or, chaapamara, toh phir, taar kar kar, maine, mera muladzi, gharebdi tha, usko bhi le gaya. Uski, kitab, darah le gaya. Do din, paisa bad me rakhaa. Toh, unhone, ek jail binai bhi, ab dharkhna di. Uske andar ka, phir vo mujhe wapas laai. Phir vo log ke kitab, store vahra, phir dekhi, phir kitab vahra di, toh phir chale gaye. Phir vo kadma, vo jaz kiya, maine par, dootin dafa kehla di. Uske baad phir vo, magistrate ke samne peesh kiya. Vo magistrate jo the, vo main, ussokat padte the. Jamat main dukaan thi, toh aas, unki bhi nazar, tum log thi, unke bhanani, maine paas aaya karthe the. Toh kabhi, bhi chaay vahra bhi peene bhi, ari, acha baat ho baat. Toh ab vo, jo dusri adhaat hoti hai, special naal, uske, vo jaz ban diye. Unhone peesh kiya, jaati, mujhe dek kar jaate hai, vo sharif aadmi, tum kaha? Or vo, man, vo, kichha huva tha, maine, bad, bad, bad jo, main bad gaya. Toh unhone, humare bhi bukhil the, unke bhi bukhil the. Main baad, ek ghundiy bahas ki, phir uske baad, wapas liya hai. Toh ek hafta me hi, 37 me diya, 30 din, toh phir mujhe bulaya. Main tha, maine, rabb lazim tha, magistrate saath the, or, saath reader saath, or, koi nahi tha, aapta. Toh phir unhone, mujhe, 5 saath, kaidh baam, shakat, or, 6 naaf, durman ki sida shuru diye. Bas phir vo, poli se liyaai. Pehle toh maine, salaabi, unse kuch kahu, bhi phir maine ka, nahi, bethamni, sida badhaa hi na diye. Toh phir, jail me, liyaai, mahar unke hawaale kar diya. Toh, jail, jo, student the, unhone dekha, toh unhone phir, jo, shakat ka tha, vo mera kaat diya. Toh main saath me hi, waan, district jail me raha. Unse, arjun ki bahas, karba the, har kis, saare, rabbak, naad, sahab, Abdul se, doos, sahab, sab jaate the, guna khatam, hoti thi. Unke kamre me hi, chaay vahra bhi, bhanani, vo hot matre, vo achhi aadmi the. Phir saath me hi, ke baad, mera, bad kar diya, central jail me, vo hor buri jail hai, paisa bad me. Phir mahar jail ke andar ek jail mali bhi thi. Mahar ye, talban vahra, or, Jish Mohammed ke aadmi, or, ye, shiyak me diye, pehle, pehle, pakkar ki jagah, unhone, hor aadmi, maane bhe the. Ne, ne, toh, vo, toh mahar phir, jail me, arav, mujhe ek kamra de diya. Aisa, 10, 10 kamre banenge, di, 10, 11, 10, waan, usko karde, chakki. Toh vo ek chakki, mujhe, ke liye di, qadhyaa bhi, umi, keerja se. Vo, din, jaate hai, aadmi, vo, unhe, khadiya nahi karthe. Jaalda chhede, toh main zehi karthe. Vo qadhyaa nahi karthe the, toh keela, main rasta tha. Ek saath, sawa saath, keela hi raha. Phir, teen, rubbi, aur, ek aur, th, machine man tha, wal, th, kar, kar. Vo bhi a gaye, phir, main matre, 5 aadmi ho gaya, phir, kuch, do, mehndi ke baad, do, morubi ki dukaan, or, rehaa bhi, ho gayi, vo chale gaye. Phir hum jo teen the, ek rubbi saab, aur ek, wo, kaam, machine man. Aur main, hum phir ikkate, koi sawa saath, isse, kuch jyada ikkate re. Toh phir maine nahi pasan chalta tha, ke, jail me, ya, koi takvi vahra, namaz vahra, padni, khana, peena, phir Jamaat, paisa bad ki taraf se bhi, badi, har cheez, khana, peena acha tha. Lekin sir ki, toh, pil ke din, pil, milakate hote thi. Rabbi ki Jamaat ki taraf se bhi, hor cheez, ya, ni, kaan, jo, hum jaate the, hal, froo, ye, sab kuch, hor aata tha. Koi aadmi bhi dost ahaab pehle the. Toh phir, sawa saath ke baad, din ki zamanat hogi, bhi chale gaye, phir main keela reh gaya. Toh phir, bas, kafi, na, waktu, sab, vaakat karke ho gaye the. Main paas, itna, khane, pil ka samaa, acha tha, phir main jitne saamne chakhiya di, unhe, taksi kar diya tha, toh vo log bhi, hor, matre, bukhush, us baat the. Or mera saara kaam ko kar kar diye the. Har hafta ke, muayna acha tha, super tournament ka, vo phir diye, sar, sir me, apne, mahar acha tha. Jeen ke, kapre, hor, the, vo hi pannen padthe, kapre bhi vo hi, hoti the, saara kaap, ek, kamre bhi mera saaf karthe the, main keela me rehta tha. Phir, isdara karse karte, yeh, 3:30, sawa, teen, sawa, ghoda the. Phir ek din, ek shikai me bataaya, ke, aapki rehaa bhi hogi hai. Main ka, chad, aisa hi, kaha hai, bhe the, main ka, chad, koi, aaya ka, tuh bataaya ka. Phir teen ke din mujhe, mulaqat hui, phir, banja aaya, usne bataaya, ke, hogi hai. Phir, vo Jamaat, paisa bad ki, Jamaat ki gaadiya, hotega, europe se gaadiya aai, phir vo mujhe ke kar, toh pas, rabbay. Mahar phir, sadar me, aadmi, gas out, se, mahar, khabal diya, phir, kar diya. Phir 6 din, ruudne, kaha, unko, bhaa, un ja kar, batathe the, jo, suna, suna, noori saab ke paas rahe the. Unhone, saara check up vahra kiya, sab kuch, jeez tha. Phir, nishere, tangi, aushiyat thi, na, je, ra, ek jagah, badd kar kar, tijmida, toh gaya tha. Toh bhi tak diye, thodo. Uske baad phir, mera pass food vahra, khatam ho gaya tha, naati ka, jo, sab, niyaam, diya, Jamaat bhi, saara kaam kiya. Toh phir, karde, mahar se, shramba di gaye, Jamaat hi, kar diye, mera pass food, vo, jamaa aaya, London ke, jo, maine, bachen, sab bahar hai. London me, 4 betiye, aur ek beta hai. Ek beti, Canada me, ek beta, Australia. Toh phir, shramba ke, mahar, main, bhaari, spash karne, gaadi ke bahar hi badda ra. Toh saara ka, vo, jo, aaye the, humare saath, unhone, kiya. Kar, toh, jab, tasveer ki chaadi thi, 10 katra, di, first me, under gaya, vo, keeche, okarke, phir a. Toh karthe the, 15, 20 din me, aade ka bina. Toh, phir, mena ho gaya, phir, kwal karthe the, saare kwal. Phir ek din, dukaan ko, main, taya, ko, jo, abhi, gaadi aayi, aapne, shramba jaan. Toh phir, dootin, ek baad, gaadi aayi, usme, badda, shramba, pohn gaya. Toh, tha, ke, vo, beragri saab, mahar pehle bache bhe the, vo, bhi, saara kaam kar the. Sir, Guldam saab, diya, dusri, teen, jo Jamaat ke the, saara, teen, mire liye, kaam kar the. Toh mahar gaya, unhone ka, aaj hi, raat ko, aapne jana hai, Amerika jaan hai, kadi, yaas se, turki jao ke, turki se, durman jao, durman se, Amerika jao ke. Or subah, 2:00 diye, jaas ka hai, toh, 2:00 jamne pohnch hai. Toh soya toh nahi, jaate hi, phir mahar pohnge. Mahar se, phir main turki gaya, turki me, teen, char ghante, mahar, ya, chara, koi tha, toh, nee, baat, logon se, kuchh gaya tha. Koi, idhar jana hai, ye, jaas kon se, vo phir, batathe the. Phir mahar se, durman jaas me badda. Toh phir, vo, mahar se, badd kar, durman a gaye, durman chal gaya, mahar bhi, dootin ghante, fort karke the. Phir, mujhe bataaya, main, utar, start, vo, phir, Amerika ka jaas aaya, mahar badda, toh phir, yaah a gaya. Aapki Amerika ke indar. Phir, yaah, bus, aaye the, aage, aadmi saath the, or, teen, char, dost ahaab the. Mera, tachib ki, kahi, main dek tarah, nahi mira, phir main, aaja, unke, intzaar karthe hoge. Karthe, ke, pasan nahi aaye, ke, nahi aaye, main, aah par, bata diya, karthe, koi baat nahi, chhi, ko diya. Usse din bhaar, vo, tachib mil gaya. Uske baad phir, 6 din, yaah jo hai, vo.
Jee, conference.
Jee, conference me, shanel, hoti re, subah, aaj me jaate the, shampu, 2:00 diye, 6:00 diye, 7:00 diya, diye, aaya the the. Waahii, khana, peena, har cheez, mahar phir, log se, mulaqat hogi. Phir, unhone, kuch aadmi, usme, select kiye, toh usme, main bhi tha, toh, usse, kya, sada ka naam? Un, Trump, Trump, usse mulaqat hai, toh phir, maine, le gaya mahar par. Toh maine saath vo the, unko bhi, andar nahi, janne diya, tajwaan jo the, kadusa, toh phir, agle. Bas ek, mehja se, biche bhi thi, ek, usi thi, toh jo, 20, 22, aur, the, jaga thi, matre. Ek, New Zealand ke the, vo, unki, dhaani, kaam ki, vo, usi par, Trump saath, yaah, under badda, hum log, idhar, khadi ho gaya. Phir, 19 minute ke baad, dhaba, khula, undar se, Trump sab aaye, badda. Phir, apna, apna, kisi, idhar, diye the, toh uska, pasan, pasan, ke, diyo. Toh phir, kes, 5, 7 minute, 2 minute, 3 minute, tumse baate karthe di. Ya, phir, mire bhi aai, maine, ke, na, sab kuch, sunaya, bhi, aase, aase, karthe, chhi, karna. Toh mera, tajwaan ke liye, hum, engle ji, toh nahi aati. Vo, sherman taasi, saab, ei, dorner, hoti the, Punjab ke, unka beta, usse bhi, wapas ho gayi, mahar par, vo, kiya. Toh usse, tajwaan, saara bataaya, unko, ye, kaha hai, ye, kaha hai. Vo, kar kar, toh, phir a. Bas ab, kal, aaram kiya, urahat, aap log, vo, ke, taavat par, kal, ab, daate, aap log karthe, acha, kara, aapko, sehde, apni, hadz, merke, apni, aman merke. Jamaat ko, draki diye, acha, Allah taala, ke, ho, se, mana.
Narae, takbi, hissa, Hazrat Muhammed Ustam, Ghulab Ahmed Ki, narae, takbi, ghilabad Ahmed Diya.
Laaki abab ne kuch puchan hai, toh puchan diye.
Jilat, jilat, kuchh hi, humne, yaah ke, kuchh noon ke, jinko, udu ki, udu ki, puri samajn nahi aati, unke liye, humne, translation bhi, rakhhi hai. The muktasir si translation, main, I'll request Prime Chaudhary Saab, to please, present the brief translation of what Shukur Bhai had mentioned about his life story. As, is it Prime Chaudhary Saab here? I believe he was downstairs taking notes, he was downstairs taking notes, he should be up very shortly. Yes, so there is a question in the audience, please.
Shukur Bhai, vo, khushna tha, ke, aapki, vo, jo, dukaan the, uska, kya bana?
Aapka, waha, ye, two din pehle, meri, banja, paisa bad me kaam karte the, toh, vo, a gaye the. Toh, jo, paisa bad chhod kar, service, toh, vo, aate the, maine ka, tuh, mere paas a do, do, toh, vo bhi, aadmi the, dukaan par. Bas, unke, do din ke baad, ye, baat, kya ho gaya. Ab, dukaan, vo hi, samar re, vo hi, saara kaam kar re, sab kuch, chhli ke se, chal riye, dukaan, chhli ke se.
Salaam alaikum.
Waalaikum.
Mene, mene, khushna, ke, jab, aap, rabbay se nikle hai, jab, achanak se, ji, aap, jaan hai, Amerika jaan hai.
Ne.
Toh, toh, aapke, kya, tasraat, rabbay chhodte, kya, kaisa?
Ne, mujhe pasan nahi tha, ke, maine, kaha jaan hai, mujhe, sir, har visa lena jaan. Toh, bas, shramba se, jamak aaya tha, toh, bas, vo, toh, mahar, unhone, raat ko, jo, se, maine saath aaye the, vo, apna, unhone, saab, unhone me, bataaya, ke, ab, aapko, Amerika jaan. Toh, phir, aap, yaah jaenge, turki, phir, durman jaenge, phir, Amerika jaenge. Toh, main, kah, main, kuchh, jo, bache, acha, cha, dorne, eh, ahsat ka, vo, yah, aap, unhone, mujhe bata hai.
Mainne, acha, aapko, balaam, main, aap, aap, humare, gar, acha, chiniu, chhodna, chhodna, sah, 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 bhi, baddo, chiniu, chhodte.
Acha, acha.
Toh, aap, mahar, 1975, 76, me, maine, badi, kiyaan ke, maine, ka.
Acha, acha.
Ho gaya, aaya.
Toh, vo, toh, maine, yaah par, dekha, maine, ye, kaha a gaya, Amerika, Allah, bharan, aapka, ye, Amerika, hor mujhe pasan aaya. London bhi, dekha hai, Spain bhi, London bhi, mujhe, hor, beauty food. Vo, bhi, bata hai, London se, bhi, jyada, mujhe, pasan aaya. Thora, ke, ro, bas, vo hi, American hai, or, ye, yaah aaya, aap, hor, hoti matre. Or, sahi, pasan lata hai, ke, kuch, insano me, aapke.
Sab, aadmi, aadmi, USA.
Waalaikum. Waalaikum as-salam. Waalaikum as-salam wa rahmatullah.
Mera khushna, aapki, ye hai, ke, kuchh, general, maine, bhoti, bhoti. Apke, jo, charging jaye hai, vo, asal me, kuchh, guztaxana, voat, jo hai, unko, mila. Toh, vo, kon sa, guztaxana, voat tha, guztaxana, usne, diya, kiya, or, kya, aapko, charging diya, kya, aapse, jida.
Ne, jhoot bhoti, koi bhi, niswa, matre, kitabe, Jamaat ki, kaabhi, bheja tha. Na, kar, likhi, na, chaapi, or, koi bhi, the, sab, kranxi, the, Jamaat ki, kitabe, thi, taskra, brownie, khadayat, vahra, ye, unhone, likha. Toh, matre, ye, kuch, apna, jhoot bhoti, in, logon, par, kaam hi, jhoot bhoti. Or, bhi, vo, dekhi, jo, kanaai, likhi, bhi, par, uspar, bhi, maulvi tha, ye, kitabe, chaata tha, kitabe, likha tha, or, maine, na, ke, main, bharan, ka, ye, na, ke, ke, Jamaat se, bharo. Jab, 5 me, partition ki, do, ye, partition hogi, 5 me, bhartha tha, yaah, phir, haalat, aisa hi, main, nahi, bhartha tha. Toh, saath, or, kaavat diya, or, kitab, na, likhi, vo, sab, aisa hi, jhoot bhoti. Koi, aadmi, ka, kadi, soch bhi, nahi sakte, toh, kisi ko, mahar, na, kisi, gaadiya, sunke, dua, vo, paas, tuh, aaram, vo, ye, humara.
Shana, shubain, ye, jo, jab, aapne, bataaya, ke, jo, dukaan thi, yah par, still existing, so, after, ki, saara, jo, huva, abhi, isso, kya, bhi, yah par, kitabe, bhi thi?
Ne, vo, toh, phir, usse, jo Jamaat hai, sab, aadmi thi, kuchh, Jamaat hai, baad, badi, baaki, vo, har, store, ja, har, badda, badda, kitabe, se. Ab, nahi, de diye, koi cheez, toh, jason, kuaan, kaidh, badda, bachon ke liye, vo bhi, bheje, batathe. Isse, se, bata, koi bhi, nahi, or, log bhi, nahi, rakti. Toh, bilkun, koi kitabe, bhi, diye, na, kwanxi, na, kitabe, koi, book.
Toh, dusri ka, diye, ke, naam, aapka, Shukur Bhai, Chashmi Waale, ke, kitabe, me, chale, main, mahar, par gaya.
Vo, toh, sarkodne, unhone, lu, ki, dukaan, har baat, toh, phir, main, yaah, aaya, na, toh, yaah, kaam, khatam tha. Toh, mahar, thode se, par, main, par, shuru kiya, phir, kaha, kha, yaah bhi, hor, dhrki diye. Toh, kaam, khatam tha, isse, se, maine, kit, karke, vikya, paas, rehte. Toh, bas, aisa hi, diye, kaha aaya, kitabe, ke, kaabhi, ke, kaabhi, koi, itna, kaam chala, itna, kaam chala, toh, bas, hori, Allah taala, ke, khudal, hor, Allah taala. Uswajah se, maulvi, aur, pakto, dusri, jise, bas, vo, diye, khul di jaate the, or, likha, par, dukaar, fir, aadmi, aapki, taabhi, ho, durman ke liye. Toh, maine, paas, koi bhi, aaya, aapar, jo, koi cheez, maanne, toh, hum, le, le deta hai, toh, usko, chah, bhi, itna, aadmi, kare, aadmi, ye, sab, chhi, so, kya hai.
Salaam alaikum, any questions from the Lajna side, or, toh, ke taraf se, ke, koi, sawal hai, toh, puch sakte hai. Can we hear, can we hear them, or, can I hear them? Can you hear them? So, we took few notes, and I apologize if I missed any detail, but Shukur Bhai mentioned that he was born in Qadhyaan on May 19, 1935. And he grew up there, and then, in his early childhood, he went to Kuwait for some military training where he didn't really like it, and he left that, and came to Sorghada, where he settled. He has, he has. And I could be wrong here, but I believe he's mentioned 5 taar, Shukur Saab, aapki, 5 beti hai, aur ek beta?
5 beti, 2 beti.
5 beti aur 2 bete. And then, he settled in Sorghada, where he did his business of optician for many years. And in 1974, when the riots erupted in Pakistan, anti-amadhi riots, he came to Rabwa for a little bit, where he lived for a small period of time. And then, he went back to Sorghada, where he started his, his work of optician. And in 1984, when the ordinance, the ordinance 20 was issued by Zayal Haq, he then wrapped up his work in Sorghada and came to Rabwa. Where he started his shop in Rabwa as an optician, and he said that he also started selling literature, Jamaat literature, in his shop in Rabwa. Where that picked up a lot, he was very successful in selling Jamaat books. And he mentioned an anecdote earlier today about how he came up with this name of Shukur Bhai Chashmi Waale. It was a different name before, but when he started his business in Sorghada, he wanted to have a unique name. So, he came up with this name, Shukur Bhai, and from there on, it took on, and he carried over the same name in Rabwa as well. And this recent incident, he has been in prison before, and there have been lawsuits against him while he was in Rabwa. Because he was selling books, Jamaat literature, and doing tab league as well. So, it is against the law of Pakistan to preach Ahmadiyat and to sell Ahmadiyat books. So, he has been in prison before, but this recent episode, where he had to stay in the prison for 3 years and 16, 3 years, 3 months and 16 days. And this was the longest, and he was moved a couple of times during that period of imprisonment in various prisons. And he mentions that in one of those years, there were some other Ahmadis who also were imprisoned during the same time. So, that time relatively went by quick and relatively easy. And then, when Ahmadis used to visit him in the prison, from all over the country, they would bring him food and refreshments. And he would share those refreshments with his prison mates, people around him. And that's how he began like a, you know, popular person in the prison, where people knew him. So, he said that with this long and arduous sacrifice of staying in prison for 3 years, he was finally released. And then, arrangements were made for him to come to the United States, and he first went to Turkey and then came here, to the United States. Where he has been to White House as well, and he's been part of that conference that was done for the, for those who have been persecuted throughout the world. And he has, he has been moving around in various Jamaats and spending time with the membership. So, that was the best I could do with the translation, and I apologize if I have missed the details. But we can have a couple of more questions, I'm not sure if Lajna has the ability to ask us the question. If not, then at least just text it to, you can, can we hear it, hear them now? Ji, please, go ahead.
Yeah, we had a couple of questions up here.
Ji, please.
Aadi, I wanted to ask, when he arrived in US Customs, did they ask him anything?
Shukur Bhai, jab, aap, customs ke, aay, Amerika, toh, vo, toh, unhone, aapse, kuchh, pucha? Custom wala, main, kuchh, nahi, kuchh, kisi main, bhi, nahi pucha.
No, they didn't ask him any question.
And another question from Lajna is, somebody was asking about his wife, how did she cope, when she was in jail, where is she now?
Aapki, aadmi, saab, me, kaise, ek, aaya? Main diya, doh dafar, bachen, saare, London, main, 4 betiye, aur ek beta, toh, vo, phir, mahar, bhi, jaati thi. Toh, 5 mein, ja kar, 6 mein, ka, udha, visa, vo, a jaati thi. Toh, abhi, jab, main aaya, unse, pehle, beti aayi thi, dadi ke liye, hum, jo, baat me, bimaat bhi, hogi, depression, dua, ala, ta, se, setman hai. Toh, phir, udhi din, unhone, rehaa bhi, ka, ho gaya, toh, abhi, beti bhi, baddi bhi, ka, diya, baap ko, le kar, chana hai. Toh, phir, vo, abhi, zawara, ab, vo, chali gayi hogi, ya, aad, ya, kal, chali jayi.
Ne, so, he's saying that he has daughters in UK, and his wife would stay with the daughters in the UK during that time. And his daughter is also taking care of his wife right now, and I believe they're gonna be, vo, yaah par hai? Aapki, they're, yeah, they're, so, right. या दें सो राइट नौ हिस वाइफ इस इन पाकिस्तान एंड शी इस गोइंग तू लंदन शॉर्टली तू वन ऑफ हिस डॉटर्स जजाकुला आई वुड नौ रिक्वेस्ट रिस्पेक्टेड अमीर साहब कबाबी तू प्लीज एड्रेस अस एंड शेयर सम इस एक्सपीरियंसेस विथ खिलाफत एंड हिस अटैचमेंट एंड ब्लेसिंग्स ही हैव रिसीव्ड फ्रॉम खिलाफत एंड विथ डी रिलेशनशिप ऑफ अल्लाह अलमाइकी ना ले
नो ऑल डी स्टोरी ना ना ओके आई एम हियर ना आप उन्हें आंसर ना यू आर वी स्टार्ट विथ
एमटीएसई ओवन रेफेंस
बिस्मिल्लाह रहमतुल्लाह
अमीर साहब हैव रिक्वायर्ड आस्क मी तू रीड आउट एन एक्सर्प्ट फ्रॉम तफसील कबीर दिस इस डी इंग्लिश ट्रांसलेशन ऑफ डी पोर्शन फ्रॉम तफसील कबीर इट रीट वन ऑफ डी मेथड्स ऑफ अक्वायरिंग डिवाइन ब्लेसिंग्स थ्रू गोद्स अंजल इस फॉर अन मैन तू एस्टेब्लिश अन रिलेशनशिप ऑफ लॉयोटी डेडिकेशन एंड सिंचियर ओबीडियंस विथ डी कलिफ हुम गोद्स हैव लेक्टेड एंड अपॉइंटेड विथ डेट न्यू बॉन्ड विथ डेट न्यू बॉन्ड वी विल बी गिवन न्यू हार्ट्स फ्रॉम अल्लाह अलमाइकी वेयर ट्रांक्विलिटी इस डिसेंडेड अपऑन इट एंड दें सपोर्टेड बाय अंजल डेट इस तू से एस्टेब्लिशिंग अन रिलेशनशिप विथ डी कलिफ कॉजेस अन ग्रेट रिवोल्यूशन इन आवर सोल्स यू विल गेन ग्रेट फेथ एंड अश्योरेंस डी अंजल्स विल स्टैंड बाय योर साइड सपोर्ट यू एंड ब्रीथ इन तू योर हार्ट्स डी स्पिरिट ऑफ सैक्रिफाइस एंड अपराइटनेस एस्टेब्लिशिंग अन रिलेशनशिप ऑफ लव सिंचियरिटी एंड लॉयोटी विथ डी ट्रू कलिफ स्ट्रैंडेंस डी रिलेशनशिप विथ डी अंजल्स एंड मेक्स अन मैन अन डेस्टिनेशन फॉर डी डिसेंशन ऑफ ऑल डिवाइन लाइट्स
नॉट डेट अल्लाह अलमाइकी अक्षत विद डुआ डुआ रहे
सो अमीर साहब अर्लीयर मेंशन आज वेल डेट व्हेन यू आर इन क्लोज रिलेशनशिप विथ डी खलीफा ऑफ डी टाइम विथ विथ लव एंड सिंचियरिटी डेट अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी नॉट ओनली डेट अल्लाह अक्षत्स योर दुआ योर प्रेयर्स बट योर डिजायर्स डी वंस डेट यू थिंक अबाउट एंड मैंने नॉट इवन प्रेयर अबाउट इवन डोस गेट अक्षेटेड बाय अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी बिकॉज़ यू हैव डेट रिलेशनशिप ऑफ लव एंड ओबीडियंस विथ डी खलीफा ऑफ डी टाइम
ना वी आर गोइंग तू डी एक्सपीरियंस एक्सपीरियंस एंड शरीफ ओपन डी गेट ऑफ मेरिकल्स
सो फ्रॉम बस मसाया अलैहिस लातोब अस्लाम हैव मेंशन डेट अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी ओपन डी डोर्स एंड ओपन डी गेट्स तू विच वी गेट तू विटनेस मेनी साइंस एंड मेरिकल्स ऑफ अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी
शरीफ डी एक्सपीरियंस
डी एक्सपीरियंस एंड अमीर साहब इस ट्रेसिंग ऑन डी वर्ड एक्सपीरियंस डेट वी गेट तू एक्सपीरियंस मेरिकल्स ऑफ अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी
ऑल ऑफ अस वी वी नीड डी एक्सपीरियंस
एंड एवरी सिंगल वन ऑफ अस नीड्स तू एक्सपीरियंस डेट
जी
सो व्हेन यू आर इन डेट क्लोज रिलेशनशिप विथ डी खलीफा ऑफ डी टाइम व्हाट एंड्स अप हैपनिंग इस डेट यू डिवेलप अन स्ट्रांग बॉन्ड विथ अन स्ट्रांगर बॉन्ड विथ अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी एंड आज डी रिजल्ट ऑफ डेट एवरी सिंगल वन ऑफ अस वो हैव डेट रिलेशनशिप विथ डी खलीफा ऑफ डी टाइम गेट्स तू एक्सपीरियंस यू नो डोस मेरिकल्स विच रिजल्ट एंड नॉट ओनली करिफाइंग योर सोल बट दे अलसो इंक्रीज यू इन फेथ इन उर्दू वी से इमान अफरोज बाते सो व्हेन यू एक्सपीरियंस खिलाफत इन दिस वे व्हेन यू एक्सपीरियंस डी साइंस ऑफ अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी इन दिस वे इट इंक्रीज योर फेथ
नॉट ओनली रीड दिस एक्सपीरियंस इन डी बुक्स वी मस्त योर सेल तू फील दिस
सो अमीर साहब अर्लीयर मेंशन आज वेल डेट इट्स नॉट अबाउट जस्ट रीडिंग दिस डिफरेंट साइंस इन डी बुक्स ऑफ अवर जमात इट्स मोर अबाउट एक्सपीरियंसिंग देम फॉर योर ओन सेल्फ इन दिस डे एंड एज डेट इट्स नॉट इनफ डेट यू रीड डेट यू नो सच एंड सच सैन्य ऑफ अवर जमात प्रेयर तू अल्लाह एंड हिस दुआ और हिस प्रेयर वर अक्षेप्ट यू हैव तू एक्सपीरियंस डेट योर करीब आर गेटिंग अक्षेप्ट डेट योर डिजायर्स आर गेटिंग अक्षेप्ट एंड हाउ डेट डेट हैपन अमीर साहब मेंशन इट हैपन व्हेन यू हैव डेट रिलेशनशिप ऑफ लव एंड ओबीडियंस विथ डी खलीफा ऑफ डी
फ्रेंड्स स्टार्ट विथ डी स्टोरी खलीफा रह
अमीर साहब अमीर साहब अर्लीयर टुडे एट मस्सिमसूर इन्हें रेट इट दिस और अमीर साहब वेल अवे आई एम एक अमित टेक दिस अमीर साहब मेंशन सम ऑफ हिस स्टोरीज विथ खलीफा तुमसीरा राबे रहमतुल्लाह हाउ अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी कम्युनिकेट्स विथ डी खलीफा एंड हाउ अल्लाह दी अलमाइकी अक्षत्स योर डिजायर्स सो अमीर साहब सेड डेट अमीर साहब ब्रदर वो यू नो वी ऑल नो वर्क्स विथ एमटीए इंटरनेशनल एंड ही यूज्ड तू पीर इन डी उर्दू क्लास मुनीर होते साहिब मेनी ऑफ अस हैव डी ओपरचुनिटी तू मीट हिम जस्ट अन फ़्यू मोस्ट सो अमीर साहब मेंशन डेट अमीर साहब वास ट्रैवलिंग तू लंदन एंड ही वास देयर एंड ही स्पोक तू हिस ब्रदर मुनीर होते साहिब एंड यू अमीर साहब ऑफ कोर्स अमीर साहब यू आर स्टिल यंग एंड अमीर साहब वास यंगर एट डेट टाइम एंड अमीर साहब स्पोक तू हिस ब्रदर डेट अमीर साहब हैव डी डिजायर तू सिट इन डी उर्दू क्लास विच खलीफा तुमसीरा रहमतुल्लाह यूज्ड एंड अमीर साहब ब्रदर सेड डेट इट्स नॉट पॉसिबल नौ इट्स टू लेट सो अमीर साहब वास नॉट हैप्पी विथ दिस रिस्पांस सो अमीर साहब सेड डेट ही वास वॉकिंग ऑन ग्रसिन हॉल रोड डोस ऑफ अस वो हैव बीन तू मस्जिद फजल ही सेड डेट ही वास वॉकिंग राइट आफ्टर अमज़िन ऑन डी ग्रसिन हॉल रोड ही वास वॉकिंग इन एन आउट इन एन आउट एंड ही प्रेयर तू अल्लाह अल्लाह डेट अल्लाह ताला मेक खलीफा तुमसीरा रहमतुल्लाह स्पीक तू मी व्हेन हजूर कम्स फॉर नमाज डेट व्हेन हजूर कम्स तू मस्जिद यूज्ड यू हजूर वास कम तू मस्जिद ही वुड से सलाम ही वुड रीड डी सलाह एंड दें ही वुड जस्ट से सलाम एंड लीव डी मस्जिद बट अमीर साहब सेड डेट ही ही प्रेयर तू अल्लाह ताला ताला मेक तखलीफा टॉक तू मी इन डी मस्जिद सो अमीर साहब सेड डेट ही वेंट तू डी मस्जिद खलीफा तुमसीरा रहमतुल्लाह ताला केम तू डी मस्जिद एंड दें खलीफा तुमसीरा रहमतुल्लाह ताला नोटिस अमीर साहब एंड आस्क हिम व्हाय डिड यू नॉट कम तू डी उर्दू क्लास सो अमीर साहब रेज दिस पॉइंट डेट हु वास इट हु बोल खलीफा राबे रहमतुल्लाह ताला तू टॉक तू अमीर साहब इट वास अल्लाह ताला एंड व्हाय डिड अल्लाह ताला लिसन
विदाउट लेटर्स
विदाउट अन्य लेटर विदाउट अन्यथिंग
अन्य मैसेज
विदाउट अन्य मैसेज अमीर साहब डिड नॉट राइट अन्य लेटर डिड नॉट सेंड अन्य मैसेज तू अन्य वन तू खलीफा तुमसीरा रहमतुल्लाह ताला बट यू नो अल्लाह ताला फोर्ट इन डी हार्ट ऑफ खलीफा तुमसीरा रहमतुल्लाह ताला तू टॉक तू शरीफ होते साहिब सो दिस वास वन इंसिडेंट डेट अमीर साहब शेयर अमीर साहब वो वास डी अंदर इंसिडेंट दसारा आज़ान सो अमीर साहब मेंशन अनदर इंसिडेंट ड्यूरिंग खिलाफत राबिया अमीर साहब सेड डेट डी फर्स्ट आज़ान ऑन डी डे ऑफ जमा वास ऑलरेडी कॉल एंड अमीर साहब वास इन मस्जिद एंड अमीर साहब आस्क इमाम साहब अताल मुजीब राशियां साहिब डेट
नॉट अमीर डेट
यस शरीफ होते साहब वास नॉट अमीर एट डेट टाइम सो ही वास अन यंग मैन डेट हमें ही ही आस्क अताल मुजीब राशियां साहिब डेट अलसो डी फर्स्ट आज़ान फॉर जमा हैव ऑलरेडी बीन कॉल बट ही वुड लाइक तू कॉल डी सेकंड आज़ान एंड अताल मुजीब राशियां साहिब सेड डेट इट्स टू लेट इट्स नॉट पॉसिबल डी फर्स्ट आज़ान इस ऑलरेडी कॉल एंड हजूर एन बट हजर खलीफा तुमसीरा रहमतुल्लाह ताला नो जूस गोइंग तू कॉल डी आज़ान सो इट्स नॉट पॉसिबल एट दिस पॉइंट एंड एस सुनेस दे फिनिश सेइंग दिस खलीफा तुमसीरा रहमतुल्लाह ताला सुन वॉक इन एंड हजूर सेड आज़ान एंड डी इंडिविजुअल वो वास सपोज तू कॉल डी डी आज़ान कॉल डी फर्स्ट आज़ान एस सुनेस डी स्टूडेंट हजूर स्टॉप दे and Hazoor said Azaan. And the individual who was supposed to call the Azaan, call the first Azaan, accidentally stood up, Hazoor stopped him. And then Hazoor said to Atal Mujeeb Rashid Sahib, "Why did you not tell Sharif Hotay to call the Azaan?"
Sharif Azaan dey.
And then Hazoor said Sharif Azaan dey. And then Sharif Hotay Sahib got up and he called the Azaan. So, the whole point of sharing these incidences is that these signs can also happen in your life as well. Ami Saif's next incident was around the July 20. The next incident that Ami Saif had shared earlier was about the intiqah of Khilafat-i-Khamisa. Just before Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala passed away, actually, one year before that, one of the friends of Sharif Hotay Sahib, Ami Saif, what was his name? Amjad?
Kamel.
Amjad Kamel Sahib.
A new convert.
He's a new convert. Ami Saif said to him that, "Let me and you, let's go to Jalasa Salana of our Jamaat in Egypt." And this new convert, he had some issues related to the passport and visa. So, he said, "Let me do some Istikharah in the Raoul Ghakati." So, his friend did the Istikharah and what he saw as a result of that Istikharah was that he is attending Jalasa, but it's not with Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala. It's with someone else who is now the Khalifa.
Yeah, small beard.
And he has a small beard and he's wearing a very specific colored coat. We'll come to that in Shalat. So, this is what Amjad Kamel Sahib saw in the dream, that someone else is the Khalifa of the Jamaat with a very short beard and he's wearing a very unique colored coat. So, Amjad Kamel Sahib informed Sharif Hotay Sahib and Sharif Hotay Sahib stopped him and said, "Look, I don't want to listen to this, don't sound." And, you know, this whole dream that his friend had shared with him, Ami Saif even forgot about it. And then Ami Saif, you know, was later on informed that he is part of Majlis Intiqah. Those of us who are not aware were Majlis Intiqah. Same day, same day that Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala passed away. That's when.
I know, I think that, I know I'm not part of this.
Oh, wow.
Because in 2000, Imam Sahib gave me the name, all the urah, they get the rules and the names of them.
So, about three years before the passing away of Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala, Sharif Hotay Sahib as well as other Jamaat presidents, Umarah, had received the rules for the election of the Khalifa as well as who is part of the Electoral College. So, when Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala passed away, and it was the day of the election or?
Same, same day.
Same day when Hazoor passed away.
Yes.
So, when Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala passed away, on that day, Atal Mujeeb Rashid Sahib, who was the secretary of the Electoral College, informed Sharif Hotay Sahib that actually you are part of the Electoral College. Whereas before, Sharif Hotay Sahib was not aware that he's part because his name was not on the list. Long story short, Ami Saif was now in London and he thought about and he prayed, and he also asked other people that, "Please pray for me" so that I can pray for the individual whom Allah Tala, or I vote for the individual whom Allah Tala wants elected to be the Khalifa of the Jamaat. So, Ami Saif says, he came to London and he was standing in the line to go inside Masjid Fazal. And those of us who have been here, who have been to Masjid Fazal, you know that there is an L-shaped alley. So, he says that this is how the line was, it was a long line and he was standing in the line and he felt as if he will have a heart attack. And an ambulance will come and will just take him any minute to the hospital. It was an overwhelming experience for him. So, Ami Saif said that, at that time when these different thoughts were crossing his mind, the person that Ami Saif had thought about, whom he was going to vote for as the Khalifa of the Jamaat. He noticed that Amir Saif is standing ahead of him and that individual was standing behind Amir Saif. So, out of respect, Amir Saif decided that if this is the man whom I want to be my Imam, then I shouldn't be standing in front of my Imam, I should be behind him. So, Ami Saif left the line and came all the way to the back. And when Ami Saif came all the way to the back from the left side, he saw two gentlemen walking. He knew one of them, but he did not know who the other person was. The individual that Amir Saif knew was Chodri Hamidullah Sahib. He is the Bakili Allah of the Dikja Jadi and we know, you know, he's a very well-known elder of our Jamaat. But Amir Saif did not recognize the second person. This second person was younger than Bakili Allah Sahib. He had shorter beard, but Amir Saif noticed something very unique about this individual. Amir Saif noticed that bright rays of light are emanating from this man's face. And right away, as if this man's image entered Amir Saif's heart. And in his heart, Amir Saif said, "This is the."
They'll know after that.
Okay.
So, I start to ask myself, "Who's this person?" I know the seniors in the Jamaat. I don't know who's this person. Only the Roshni, the Moon can convince it to my heart. After that, we need that insight.
So, Amir Saif had this amazing experience where he sees this man who we did not know. And Amir Saif knows the elders of the Jamaat, who the elders are, the office owners and so on and so forth. But Amir Saif was not aware who this man was. Amir Saif says that soon after this, they all went inside the Masjid Fazal and then the doors of Masjid Fazal were locked behind them. And now they are sitting inside and Chodri Hamidullah Sahib, as I mentioned, he was the president, the presiding officer or the president of the Electoral College. And Atal Mujeeb Rashid Sahib was the secretary of the Electoral College. And Atal Mujeeb Rashid Sahib wrote out the rules, that these are the rules through which the next Khalifa was going to be elected. And after that, Amir Saif mentioned that Chodri Hamidullah Sahib asked who would like to propose names. And different people started raising their hands and those names were proposed. But when those names were being proposed and being seconded, none of the people whose names was being proposed were actually standing up. So, the names that were being proposed, those individuals kept sitting. And towards the end of that procedure when names are being proposed, a certain person's name was proposed and nobody seconded. And Amir Saif.
When they mentioned name, my heart can't lose and refuse. Another assistant is now.
Oh, wait. Amir Saif mentioned a very unique point. Amir Saif said that when those different people's names were being proposed and seconded, he felt that something was not right in his heart. He didn't feel right when those names were being proposed. And Amir Saif had this dilemma. He kept thinking that if these people whose names now are being proposed and this is how I am feeling, how am I going to be with this person who, if he becomes the Khalifa and my heart is rejecting him? So, he was having these dilemmas.
Dilemma, shadi.
It's a great word, you know, to say the least. Then Amir Saif mentioned that towards the end, someone's name was proposed and nobody seconded. So, Amir Saif decided that he's going to raise his hand and second that person's name. But Amir Saif says something overtook him and even when he wanted to, he couldn't raise his hand. So, to show that this was extraordinary, that although these were human beings sitting in that gathering, but now Allah and His angels had overtaken this Majlis. And now Allah Tala and His angels were operating through these men that were sitting in Masjid Fazal to elect the next Khalifa. So, when these names were being announced that, you know, such and such person's name was proposed and seconded by such and such person, at that time, Amir Saif found out mistaken, it was Amir Sahib Germany.
Yes.
Amir Sahib Germany of Gulab Akis Hauser Sahib, he requested the presiding officer that whoever's name is being proposed, if he could also stand up so that we all can see whose name is being proposed. Because it's not necessary that all who are sitting here, we know who these individuals are. So, after this, all the individuals whose names were proposed, they started standing up. And then the name was mentioned of Saad Dada Mirza Masrur Ahmed Sahib. And when he stood up, Amir Saif noticed that Saad Dada Mirza Masrur Ahmed Sahib was not sitting towards the front. And Amir Saif.
He didn't know him.
And he didn't know him. He didn't know who Saad Dada Mirza Masrur.
When they mentioned Masrur Ahmed, I became confused, I thought this is Mia.
Mia Anasahib. Amir Saif mentioned that when the name Masrur Ahmed was proposed, Amir Saif got confused. He thought that maybe this name belonged to Saad Dada Mirza Anasahib, who is, you know, quite old at that time.
He didn't see him before.
And Amir Saif saying he had not seen Saad Dada Mirza Masrur Ahmed Sahib, Hazrat Khalifa Tumsi. That he thought that maybe Mia Anasahib is the one who is being mentioned as Mirza Masrur Ahmed. So, he says that Amir Saif turned around to see who Mirza Masrur Ahmed was and he noticed this person sitting all the way towards the back. And as soon as he saw this man whose name was Mirza Masrur Ahmed, Amir Saif says, "I recognized him right away, that this is the man whom I had seen just a few moments earlier, outside when I was standing in the line." The man who came from the left side and there was bright light, rays of bright light that were emanating from his face. And his image entered Amir Saif's heart. So, Amir Saif right away in his heart knew that this is the man who's going to be the next Khalifa. So, when it was time to vote and the name for Saad Dada Mirza Masrur Ahmed Sahib was presented, Amir Saif raised his hand only to realize that almost everyone in that Masjid also waited for Saad Dada Mirza Masrur Ahmed Sahib. And this is how Allah and His angels overtook that company of men and this is how Allah the Almighty elected through them the Khalifa, the Imam of Jamaat.
After that, when I met Tanja, I was.
After this, Amir Saif says that he went and he met the same friend who one year earlier had informed him about his dream. And Amir Saif at that time had a picture. You know when Khalifa Tumsi Khamis Aydahullah became the Khalifa, in the very beginning of his Khilafat, there was a picture of his which was taken in which he's sitting and he had, I think it was.
Wearing the.
Coat of the Promised Messiah.
No, I did a small.
With a very small beard. So, in the very beginning, Hazoor had a small beard and he's wearing the coat of Hazrat Maseem Awad Alaihissalam and he's sitting on that chair. So, Amir Saif took that picture with him and he showed it to the same friend. And when Amir Saif showed that picture to his friend, Amjad Kamel Sahib, Amjad Sahib said, "This is the same man I had seen in my dream last year that I told you about. But there is something different. In my dream, he was wearing beige colored coat." So, Amir Saif then mentioned, Amir Saif then mentioned that actually when Hazrat Saad Dada Mirza Masrur Ahmed Sahib was elected as the Khalifa, he was wearing a beige color coat. So, this is to show that the experiences which are mentioned or the excerpt which I read before you, that these experiences are not just, you know, for elders who existed fifty years ago or a hundred years ago. It happens even today.
This is the experience.
You have to experience this yourself and when you experience this yourself, Amir Saif mentioned that your own faith will increase and your love for Khilafat and Allah Tala ultimately will increase and your desires and your prayers that Insha Allah Tala will be accepted. Then Amir Saif also shared some incidents that he had, some of the incidents, not all, that he has during Khilafat-i-Khamisa as well. One very beautiful incident Amir Saif mentioned was about speech in Arabic language. Amir Saif mentioned that Amir Saif met Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala and presented this idea that Hazoor, a speech in Arabic from Khalifa Tumsi addressing the Arab world would be an amazing thing if we can do this. And Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala agreed to it. MTA set up the studios and Munir Hotay Sahib along with the rest of the NTA team. Now, they were waiting for Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala. But Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala did not show up. So, Munir Hotay Sahib went back and asked Hazoor, "What happened, you know, we've been waiting and you did not come?" At that moment, Khalifa Tumsi Rabeel Rahmahullah Tala said, "It is going to happen." Meaning the speech in Arabic by the Khalifa addressing the Arab world is not going to happen during my Khilafat, it will happen in the next Khilafat, right after you. And we all were blessed to be part of that historic day when Sayyidina Amir al-Muminin ayatul Ahlak ala bin Asra Aziz addressed the Arab world through MTA Rabiya. And you all witnessed that Arabic speech of Hazrat Khalifa Tumsi Khamis ayatul Ahlak ala bin Asra Aziz. Amir Saif had few more incidents from Khilafat-i-Khamisa as well. Which one would you like me to share?
My son.
Yes. Amir Saif's son's name is Bashir Uddin.
Hazoor, his name was.
Khalifa Tumsi Khamis. So, Hazrat Khalifa Tumsi Khamis ayatul Ahlak ala bin Asra Aziz has named Sharif Hotay Sahib's son Bashir Uddin.
No, he said Bashir Uddin in the beginning. No, first he said Mahmudah. He says, "Well," after, "Alhamdulillah, Jazakallah." He said, "Wait," and then after, "More time." And then he said completely, Bashir Uddin Mahmudah.
So, Amir Saif says that Khalifa Tumsi Khamis gave Amir Saif's son the name. And in the beginning, Hazoor gave the name Mahmudah. And Amir Saif said, "Jazakallah Hazoor." And then Hazoor said, "Wait," and then Hazoor thought about it and then Hazoor gave him the full name of the second Khalifa. Bashir Uddin Mahmudah. So, this is the name of Amir Saif's son. Now, this story gets very interesting. Amir Saif mentioned that his son, Amir Saif received a phone call from his wife one day. Who, she's a teacher. Yeah, she's a teacher and she mentioned to Amir Saif that their son has often gotten ill and has been now taken to the hospital and she asked him to join them at the hospital. And Amir Saif says that he went and he found that his son was not in a good condition. And the doctors were saying that his son, who was only thirteen years of age, has suffered a heart attack. Doctors were diagnosing that maybe this young boy of thirteen years of age has suffered a heart attack. So, Amir Sahib, you know, he consulted or consulted some other physicians, heart specialists, Dr. Muntaz and, you know, a few others in and around the area. And they were saying that this is a serious condition and your son is most likely going to require a bypass surgery. It's no joke, you know, for a thirteen-year-old boy to suffer something like that. And Amir Saif, before doing anything, decided that he's actually going to take a son to Khalifa Tumsi Khamis ayatul Ahlak ala bin Asra Aziz before doing anything. And Amir Saif had this desire that he would ask Sayyidina Amir al-Muminin ayatul Ahlak ala bin Asra Aziz to take his hand, on which, that blessed hand of his, on which he wears the ring of Sayyidina Maseem Awad Alaihissalam. And he would request, or he had this desire that Hazoor, you know, takes his blessed hand with the ring of the Promised Messiah and, you know, bless the chest and the heart of Amir Saif's son. And Amir Saif says that he went for the Mulaqah with his son, but, you know, for maybe Amir Saif, probably out of shyness, Amir Saif did not make that request. And he kept that desire in his heart.
His pushiness.
And this is why he had actually traveled all the way from Kababiy to London. And he was not able to say it. And the Mulaqah ended and now they're leaving the room. And all of a sudden, when they're leaving the room, Hazoori Anandar ayatul Ahlak ala bin Asra Aziz called Amir Saif's son back. He said, "Come back." And Hazoor called him for himself and then Hazoor took his right blessed hand with the ring of the Promised Messiah, Alaihissalam. And he touched the heart of that young boy. He touched the heart of that young boy and it didn't end there. Then Hazoor unbuttoned the shirt of that young boy and touched his hand and the ring of the Promised Messiah on that young boy's heart. After this, Amir Saif with his family, he came back. And when he spoke to Dr. Muntaz, Dr. Sahib told Amir Saif, "Don't rush, don't hurry to get your son operated because it's not a small proceeding." And then Amir Saif's son was taken for a heart exam where they make your heart beat so fast so that they can actually record at what rate the heart starts to malfunction. That's the threshold where they say, "Okay, this is where the heart attack begins."
Called stress MRI.
Stress MRI. So, stress MRI was performed on that young boy. And Amir Saif says that when they performed the stress MRI, the doctors came back and said, "There is nothing wrong with Bashir Uddin Mahmudah."
Laa'atakbi.
Allah. So, Amir Saif had earlier mentioned that experience these things for yourself and this is how you experience when you have that loving and that loving relationship with Khalifa Tumsi which is also deeply rooted in obedience to His Allah. Then Amir Saif mentioned.
Impossible to change this.
The bottom line of this is, what was considered as impossible became possible through Khilafat-i-Akhmati. That Allah the Almighty, because Allah has given us Khalifa Tumsi, through that blessed touch of Khalifa Tumsi, that act which was considered almost impossible, not almost, actually, it was considered impossible, became possible. And his son survived and is now healthy, Alhamdulillah, without any operation. Amir Saif.
Again, this is not stories, this is.
Experience, these are not fables, these are not stories. He's saying that these are living experiences of Amis. Shall I tell them about?
Jumma, jumma.
Okay, Amir Saif.
Jazakallah for these faith-inspiring stories, really moving. Amir Saif and Shukubai have to go back to Bata Rahman, so just sensitive of their time as well. May Allah bless them for the time that they have given us. This is truly inspirational for all of us and we need to try to inculcate and reflect on these things, internalize them and build that connection with Allah the Almighty and give sacrifices for our Jamaat. We have a small token for our weird guest, Wahab Mirza Sahib. So, we have a small token of our appreciation for you, Ashok Saif, May for Amir Saif, we'd like you to.
If you can explain about the wishing machine. Jazakallah, Al-Jazakallah.
If we can quickly take a group photo, if you don't mind, and then we'll do Azaan and do Jummas. Jazakallah. If I could request everyone to assemble here.